All right, I called to order the Gladstone City Council Work Session for February 21st, 2018. It is 5:30 PM. We're here to discuss the Gladstone Civic Center project. Since this is just a work session, if we could just go around the table and make introductions. Go ahead, Michael.
Counselor Michael Milch. Counselor Mercer.
Counselor Neil Reisner.
Counselor Lyndon Neese.
Counselor Matt Tracy.
I am Kathy Brucker, your new financial consultant.
I'm Carol Samuels. I'm with Piper Jaffray. We are also a financial consultant, but a different kind of financial consultant.
Much smarter.
Jeff Jolly, I'm the police chief.
David Doofman, City Attorney's Office.
I'm Gulgan Mercer, no relation to Tom. I'm a bond lawyer.
Jim Wynott, Public Works Director for the City of Gladstone.
Kim Knox, Michelle Doblatz-Johnson, Project Manager for the City for the Civic Center Project.
Kat McFerran, City Counselor.
Jackie sitting down there.
Jackie Vett, City Administrator.
And Tammy Stumpel, Mayor. Could everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, so this is a work session, so it's fairly informal. We don't normally have business from the audience because we have an open discussion around the table, so that's how we'll proceed. And Jackie. All right, everyone, thank you for being here this evening. We put a lot of time and effort into bringing everybody together so that we could talk about where we are with the new City Hall and the new Police Department, and what the next steps are, and what kind of guidance we may need from you today. It is very informal, and I will tell you that I'm very excited because in the government world, right now, you have the Dream Team in regards to financing these two projects. And it's very rare that a city has two civic buildings that they're financing at one time. And so having Gulgan here and having Carol here, and you guys are just now meeting Kathy Brucker, who's our new financial consultant in the interim period, and now Kim Knox, who's our Project Manager, and she's handling the request for proposals that we're going to talk a little bit right now this evening as well. And then Chief Jolly and Public Works Director Jim Wynott and David Doofman. We've put a lot of work into this. And so I have a lot of handouts for you, but none of them is new material. And so I don't want to pass them out unless it's something that you feel like you need as we're going through this conversation this evening. The one that I will hand out is the Notice of Measure election that the citizens voted on in 2015. But what I want to do first of all is to very briefly take you through the outline and the talking points for tonight, and how we got to this point where we are. So back in 2013, the city hired Group McKenzie, and they did a programming study to replace the City Hall and the Police Department at this current location. And in that programming study, they came to realize that we need approximately 20,000 square feet if we were going to continue to have the City Hall and the Police Department at this current location. A couple of years later, in November, the Ballot Measure 3471 is the authorization to construct and incur debt to finance the new civic buildings. And that is what we're going to go through in detail here in a little bit. And I'll talk to you, as you all know, originally, we were going to have this discussion in an executive session, and all of us are very comfortable having that in open session. However, if David or Gulgan feel that we are infringing on legal interpretations, we can go into an executive session here this evening. We're hoping that that doesn't happen, but if we need to, we can do that. So after the ballot measure was approved in 2015, a couple of years later, and quite honestly, I don't have the history on how this happened, but the city desired to acquire the Portland Avenue property specifically for the new Police Department. And as most of you are aware, we were able to do that last January, so we have that site. And then in January 2017, Group McKenzie was hired again, and this time, they did a program study on the City Hall Police Department and Public Works if we were to combine them in a master plan down there. In August of 2017, the City Council authorized Option B, which is the last attachment on this document. And please remember that it's for conceptual purposes only. And the authorization that they provided us was to go ahead and build both the new City Hall and the Police Department on the Portland Avenue property. That same evening, the City Council also approved an exemption from the traditional competitive bidding, which is why we are now in what's called a progressive design-build stage, and that is what Kim Knox is handling for the city. And then we also, in February this year, went out for our request for proposals on the progressive design-build. If you want a copy, I have that for you here. And just very briefly, you see the timeline, and tomorrow, actually, we have our pre-proposal meeting with the contractors and architects that may be interested, but I believe it's only the contractors that will be attending. And so Kim, Jeff, Jim, and myself will be part of that pre-construction meeting, and we'll do a site visit. You have some brief overview on the project in here in regards to programming and square footage. And I just want to reiterate that the purpose of tonight is to not go into that in detail. In fact, I believe the city has spent about $40,000 in programming back from 2013 when we first hired Group McKenzie. To the 2016, we spent $20,000 on the programming. So if we want to talk about square footage and how we came up with this or that, I have another attachment for you that's part of the request for proposal, and that process was vetted very carefully when we did that. What we really want to focus on tonight is the project budget and funding. So if you look under that section there, in our request for proposal, it's anticipated to be $10.5 million, and those are what are considered hard costs for the contractor. It doesn't include any other city soft costs, which are land use applications, equipment, furniture, system development charges, and other items that we will go through as we finalize the project budget. So currently, we are estimated at a $12.8 million budget. And when the ballot measure was approved in November 2015, at that time, the estimated costs were broke out $4 million for the City Hall and $7.2 million for the Police Department. So what we want to talk tonight is about how we plan on paying for this project. And on the second to last page there, we have project budget, debt issuance, and full faith and credit. And that's why the Dream Team's here tonight, is to explain to you what those mean. So we have an estimated project budget at $12.8 million. Remember, we already spent $1 million for the land acquisition. That came out of our state shared revenue funds. So we have a total project of $11.8 million. In our current budget, we have $5 million coming from the Urban Renewal Agency, that is cash. Please keep in mind in the back of your head as we go through this that there's currently about $7.5 million cash in the Urban Renewal Agency account. But we only have $5 million budget to spend. What the voters approved and what David and Gulgan are going to explain to you is that we're able to finance $3 million in the long-term urban renewal debt, which will be backed by our general fund and full faith and credit, with the remaining of $3.8 million that needs to be financed through the Urban Renewal Agency. And so if you have any questions on the overview piece of that, let us know now. Otherwise, what I would like to do is you go back to the first page under Item Number Two, November Ballot Measure 3471. I would like David and Gulgan to explain a little bit about what our citizens approved.
Can I ask one quick question? Who are the staff members that are managing the pre-bids and all of that stuff? I know it's you, Jeff Jolly?
Well, Kim is managing all of that.
But there's four staff members? Wasn't there four staff members?
It will be Public Works Director, Police Chief, myself, and then we're looking to one outside person from possibly Oregon City.
Okay.
Okay, so does everybody have a copy of the ballot measure that was approved?
Coming around.
You ready, David?
Certainly.
Okay.
So in 2015, you, the city, I know that the City Council has had some changes in terms of personnel since that time, forwarded a measure to the voters seeking authorization mainly for two reasons. One, you have a charter requirement that came online in 2012, there's two of them in 2012. One that says before you take on any project that's greater than $1 million, $1 million or greater in value, you need authorization from the voters. And then there's a separate charter requirement that says if you go out and seek debt in any amount, that has to be, through a municipal bond issue, that has to be authorized by the voters as well. So that's what Measure 3471 did. And it identified various funding sources as to what the budget was at that time for the two buildings. And you'll see that in the summary that talks about urban renewal agency funds. At that point, there was a desire to sell certain properties, the state revenue funds that Jackie mentioned, and then the long-term debt. And the city will incur $3 million in debt to be repaid using future urban renewal agency funds. So the idea there is that the, that debt would be, and certainly going to defer to Gulgan and Carol in terms of these specifics, but that would be backed by the full faith and credit of the city, but paid off through, the intent is to pay that off through urban renewal tax management. The issue, I think, that has presented itself in terms, well, let me back up. So our view in terms of the funding sources is, if you recall, you have a charter requirements that talk about getting authorization to construct a project larger than $1 million or more, and you have a requirement that if you're going to get debt, that you get voter approval to do that. So in my view, what you have in terms of the funding sources are three essentially proposed ways to go ahead, and four ways, but three that aren't tied to debt as to how you would go ahead and fund these buildings. I believe those can change. You've obviously made a decision policy-wise, or at least you have subsequent charter amendments that don't prohibit, but limit your ability to sell certain properties. Those are the park amendments that also came, the most recent charter amendments that you've had. And the way, those are very broadly worded. The petitioners for those basically said any property that could have a park on it, even if it were a conditional use, is a property that before you can sell, you have to get voter approval for. And that's, recently, you did the rainy collector. That's a good example of something that I don't think anybody looks at and thinks, oh, that's park property. But under the terms of the charter amendments, since it could have a park, that's something that needs to go to the voters. So really, in my view, and, you know, I'll again defer to Gulgan and Carol in terms of their take on this, but the $3 million is sort of where we run into a limitation in terms of funding. And I believe that descends from the charter requirements because you've said voters have to approve debt before you can incur any through bonds. And the fact that it talks specifically about will incur an amount likely limits our flexibility in getting more debt than that, at least according to this approval from the voters. So what we've been talking about is, okay, if that's the case, then what are other ways to potentially fund the construction of these buildings? And we'll get into that tonight, obviously, but that's where you get into, of course, you still have the possibility of selling city property, but I think from discussions over the past, you know, 12 to 18 months, that's a much less attractive option. I'm not sure how realistic that is at this point. So it would be a matter of looking at borrowing perhaps against future urban renewal agency increment, and potentially using more than was envisioned when you started this process. I don't know if I got that more or less accurate, but...
Yeah, that's right, David. And just, you know, to make it a little bit more explicit, so this ballot title and your charter limits how much the city can borrow, but the urban renewal agency can borrow on its own outside of these limits. So that would be the funding source for the remaining portion of the project that's available.
And I think just a little bit of history is, if you get back to that sale of certain city properties, I believe that where the nature park now is was intended to be sold and the proceeds to go towards this project. So that's not an option at this point. And if you take that out of our equation, actually budgetarily-wise, we're doing very good for this being a three-year-old ballot measure as far as costs go. So Gulgan, can you just explain a little bit about what your role is at this point since the city is going to be borrowing funds?
Sure, yeah. So I will spare you the history, if anyone's interested, flag me at the end. But there, lenders will not lend money to governments unless there's a third-party bond lawyer like my firm that provides an opinion that the borrowing is valid and legally binding. And we are obligated to provide an unqualified opinion, unlike some lawyers that can say, you know, you may be able to do this or that, but here are the risks. We don't have that kind of flexibility. So there needs to be very firm authorization in the federal constitution, state constitution, state statutes, and city charters for us to give an opinion. So that's why we look painstakingly at these documents to see what the authorization is for borrowings, and the limitation for the city is the $3 million. But as I said, there's no limitation in these documents to how much the urban renewal agency can borrow, and that's why we're talking about that option.
Part of the due diligence that we've been working the last couple of weeks is they'll take all of our urban renewal agency plan, reports, amendments, which we have 22, which is just unheard of, and go through all of them to make sure that, one, we can use urban renewal funds for the City Hall and the Police Department, and that the amendments were done correctly. And I'm pretty confident all of that has been done. But that's the type of diligence that their firm will do in assuring that we loaned us this money. And so as we go into this a little bit deeper, then Carol's going to talk about what does pledging your full faith and credit mean to the city, and how can you borrow more from the urban renewal agency without going back to a vote from the people? So we have some very creative options that we're going to talk to you about tonight, but what really flagged me last week was, I mean, I'm just going to be honest, I was interpreting this ballot measure that we could encourage that to construct these new buildings, and if that meant that we needed to borrow $6 million instead of $3 million, that we were okay to do that. And then that's where we said, okay, timeout, we need to have a conversation, make sure that you are all aware of this limitation, but also know that there's solutions moving forward. Does that make sense?
And I would point out too, to be fair, that was my interpretation as well. I do recall in 2015, I wasn't really closely working with the city at that point, but at least discussion around the idea of perhaps that number being less of a ceiling and more of a floor. But, you know, ultimately, as Gulgan said, the Bond Council and how that debt would be ultimately authorized, there's not much flexibility on that. There is a process that the city could go through if we felt that there was sufficient evidence to sort of support that the $3 million wasn't meant as a ceiling. And that is a process that you can basically petition the court, and it's called a validation process. It's not a lawsuit against anybody. It's essentially a request to the court to say, we believe that this language was intended to mean something more than $3 million. I will be honest with you, and that's something that I think if you want to hear more about, we could talk about in executive session. But the reality for that is that, you know, we'd need to do a lot of digging in terms of what the intent was. There's not a lot of, there was one argument in favor. It doesn't really get into that issue specifically, and there were, in my research, no more than that. So it's candidly not the most attractive option, but it's something that we can certainly talk about more.
I am very confident in our city's ability to borrow from the urban renewal agency. And with Kathy's short time that she's been here, she's had an independent look at our financial condition. And so I'm going to have Kathy talk to you a little bit about what our urban renewal agency balance is and how we could support future debt service payments.
Okay. The balance of the urban renewal agency at this time is $7,514,000. Close enough there. You do have it all invested in the local government investment pool right now, where it's currently earning 1.74% interest. Your average collections for the past four years of current and any delinquent property taxes have been coming in at $822,000 per year plus your interest earnings. The interest earnings would be outside of the maximum indebtedness, so that can, there's less restriction on how that is spent. So as far as your fund balance, as far as your available funds within the urban renewal district, you definitely have it there to cover the $5 million that is in the budget for your transfer to the civic building fund. You'd still have a balance left of over $2.5 million. As far as the debt service, Carol will be getting into it, as far as what the estimated debt service payments would be, and the amount, the collections that are coming in per year would, from what we've seen, preliminary numbers easily satisfy that. So not only would you be able to repay any debt service, but you would still be able to continually replenish your fund balance in there.
One of the decisions that we'll get a consensus on tonight is whether or not the council would prefer to only transfer $5 million and keep the $2.5 in reserve, or do they want to transfer more and we borrow lesser of the final amount. So we have some options, and that's all very good. It's all very healthy. Our city has never really incurred debt before, and we're ripe for that. And so I think this is all a very positive direction that we're going. So Carol, do you want to talk a little bit about the debt service payment? And go ahead.
May I ask one more question of Kathy? The last time we had a report from our consultants on urban renewal, they indicated that we had a maximum indebtedness of $23 million, and that we had spent a little over seven, I think, at the time, something that left approximately $15 million in maximum indebtedness over the life of the urban renewal agency.
That's correct.
You've referenced basically cash on hand.
Mm-hmm.
Is that $15 million figure still pretty accurate? Have we spent urban renewal money since July of '16 when that report was given?
Yeah, that was actually through July of '15, or July 1st of 2015. And since that time, you've spent only about an additional $20,000 in the last two fiscal years.
So when we put in the budget $5 million for buildings, we haven't actually taken money out of their renewal fund and put it into a city fund? That is just a budgeted figure that's conceptual but not actually transferred or considered spent?
Correct.
Okay.
That's correct.
Okay, so a little background on why we care what borrowing vehicle you use. As you've heard already, we're talking about two different types of borrowing vehicles. One is what we call a full faith and credit obligation. It is a borrowing by the city that is secured in part by urban renewal receipts, but what investors really care about is that it's additionally secured by the general fund, which is very healthy. So from the perspective of an investor short of a voted general obligation bond, a full faith and credit is considered the safest form of investment they can buy from a municipality, and therefore, it's going to carry the lowest interest rate. The, apologies, usually people say I'm too loud. The other form of borrowing we're talking about is what's called an urban renewal or tax increment financing, which is borrowed not by the city, but by the urban renewal agency itself. In that situation, the only thing that is pledged to the lender, the investor, are tax increment revenues. So you can imagine, given that urban renewal revenues while in Gladstone have been fairly steady, they're not considered as safe as the city's general fund because urban renewal can go up or down based upon what happens with value in the area. And in the event of a catastrophic failure of one of the properties, say, that forms the increment, you could end up seeing a sizable diminishment in the amount collected for urban renewal, which could threaten your ability to repay the debt. Even though legally, that's the only thing that's on the hook, that makes investors a little skittish of urban renewal. And urban renewal in Oregon, I don't have to tell you, if you've lived through discussions about urban renewal, is super, super complicated. The way that the increment is collected is hard to explain. The volatility is hard to explain, and sometimes the legislature does stuff that affects urban renewal that is hard for you to predict or control, all of which boils down to one single factor that is really your takeaway. Urban renewal borrowings are going to be more expensive than full faith and credit bonds. How much more expensive depends on a lot of factors, and I'm going to touch on, I actually am not tonight going to give you debt service numbers because what we need to do after this meeting is go back and kind of run a lot of different scenarios to come up with a package that works best. But the types of things you have to think about is, how long do you borrow for? The longer you borrow on an urban renewal financing, the more skittish investors get, the interest rate is going to be higher. How concentrated are the properties within the urban renewal area? As I was sharing with Kathy, one of the things my bank placement guy was immediately focusing on was, okay, you've got an incremental value of about $76 million. How many properties are within the area? Is it 100? If it's 100, then, you know, if one goes out of business, no big deal. If it's three and one goes out of business, that could be a sizable detractor from the comfort level that investors have. So we're going to need to do some research into that and figure out that policy. How long do you borrow on the full faith and credit side? So keeping in mind that this really is a package where we're trying to come up with $6.8 million through a combination of city borrowing, urban renewal borrowing, and potentially cash, you could theoretically borrow on the full faith and credit side for a long period of time and potentially shorten the portion that goes to urban renewal. the portion that goes to urban renewal. So all of those pieces are going to be blended in a centrifuge-like thing, and we're going to come up with an option that, or a couple of options, that gives you some choices about which direction you go. I, too, have no doubt that we're going to come together with a package that allows you to move forward on this, but it's not going to be quite as straightforward as I think we were hoping it would be when we thought the city could borrow for the whole thing and use urban renewal to pay it back.
Question, if I may. So being that the Urban Renewal District isn't the only property owners that pay into the district, not like Clackamas Town Center back for, you know, 30 years, that they started back in the 80s. The district is primarily public buildings or, you know, like the SDA nonprofit, whereas every property owner in the city pays into it. So does that make it as volatile as what you're alluding to?
So this is a flavor of why urban renewal is so friggin' complicated. Excuse my partial French there. You are exactly right. From a tax collection standpoint, arguably, every taxpayer within the city of Gladstone pays in to the Gladstone urban renewal area. Because what happens is you take the city tax rate, and the county tax rate, and the school district's tax rate, and you multiply that combined tax rate times the incremental value of the urban renewal area. You come up with an amount, roughly $800,000, that is actually carved off of the taxes that otherwise would be paid to the city of Gladstone, or Clackamas County, or Gladstone School District. So what that means effectively, that division of the taxes, means that arguably, all taxpayers are paying for it. That's a good saying from a diversification standpoint, but what investors are focused on is, your incremental value right now is about 76 million dollars. If that gets squeezed, let's say it turns into 50 million, the taxes will still be paid. It will still be a calculation of value times the consolidated tax rate of all taxpayers within the city, but it won't go to the urban renewal area. It'll go to the city, or it'll go to the county. So the concentration within the area is a second, and arguably more important factor than who pays the taxes. It's how much value is in the district that really gets the attention of lenders who are saying...
In this case, it wouldn't be the district, it'd be the city, right? Because the district itself, as I say, is mostly city property and school district property, and the SDA camp.
Well, that is new information to me. And if that's true, I would actually, there must be taxable property within the area, otherwise you wouldn't be...
Very, very little. It's, seriously, it's spited all the way from Kracksburger all the way down to here.
I don't think it's not.
Do you have a list of all of the proper taxpayers in the urban renewal districts today from the county?
Well, I pay into it about $180, and I live three blocks from here.
Yeah. Again, Jackie, that is the wrong question. This was information I requested, and I realized after I requested it, that it does not get at the issues that I'm talking about. Because this is the top, the top taxpayers of the agency are, in fact, the top taxpayers of the city.
Okay, right.
So that's good.
Right. So it's going to be, you know, the car dealerships?
Right.
And, you know, properties along 82nd Drive, and along here, too, probably, are going to be the big payers into this, because, like I say, everybody in the city, I'm not saying everybody, property owners in the city pay into this.
Correct. And that is a strong feature of urban renewal. That's right.
So that's what I was trying to say, is that it's different, being that it's not just the properties in the district itself, it's the properties within the whole city, which could be to our advantage, maybe. We'll see how it plays out.
Different than what, I guess, is the question. He's saying it's different, so is it different?
It is helpful that all taxpayers pay from a security standpoint.
And that's what I heard from you. From the investor's standpoint, they want to see that availability a little bit.
But that's only a portion of what they care about. Because if there's no incremental value, then it doesn't matter whether you tax everybody. There isn't going to be enough mon, what they're focused on is the $800,000 that you're collecting, and what could theoretically go wrong to cause that number to go down?
Property values tank.
Right.
For sure.
Just to throw some interest rates at you, if that's helpful. Is that helpful?
All right, yep.
And this is why narrowing all of these options down is going to take a little bit of time. Got a quote on 15-year full faith and credit of the city versus 15-year urban renewal-only financings. The one I feel really good about is the 15-year full faith and credit. It's going to be about 3% in today's market. Interest rates have come up a bit in the past month or so, but they're still pretty low. Urban renewal 15-year, the quote I got was anywhere from 3.5% to 4.5%, which is, in my world, a huge range, and it depends on all of the ingredients we were just talking about. So we need to really dig deep, once we get feedback from you about whether you would like to try and borrow the whole amount of urban renewal, or, given that urban renewal may well be a fair amount more expensive, whether you'd prefer to use your cash to cause the urban renewal financing to be as small as possible.
Can we back up for clarification? So Michael had mentioned the 23 million, and I know that Nick had done some work back in 2016, I believe. Michael, you sent this out to us yesterday, the link. I think I heard, I'm sorry, I think I heard Kathy, and I just need a clarification. I think I heard you say that the poised and positioned money actually was against the 23 million.
It will be once spent.
Once spent. But I think, let's clarify, there was 7.3 million, I believe, or roughly that, that has been spent, and that was what Nick had gone back and looked at. At least that's what was presented at the work session in 2016.
You have a maximum indebted capacity of 23 million.
Understand that.
Yep. You've spent roughly 7 million. There's 15 million left.
The rest of it's going to be applied.
Yes, exactly. Of that 15 million, 5 million has been allocated right now.
Okay. So when I heard it, I heard that it was the 7.5, or 7. whatever, 5 poised, and that's why I wanted to clarify that. Thank you.
All right. So just to reiterate, this is a no-new-tax proposal. There's no new-vote proposal. Our Urban Renewal Agency does not sunset, which is a very positive for us. And really, what I would like to know is, does the council want to look into the validation process on the interpretation of our ballot measure? Would you rather, I continue to work with my dream team, I'm coming up with the financial packages that will come back to council for consideration, and does one of those alternatives want us to be, to be using all the 7.5 million in urban renewal, or do you want us to stay with just the 5 million and see how that comes out? Keeping in mind that we are healthy enough to make the debt service payments for 15 to 20 years, and also get additional revenue to help do some future projects in urban renewal. So it's all very good news. It really is.
So the first decision is, do we want to go try the validation path, or do we want to go with the dream team? So that's what we have to discuss right now. Pat, what are you, which way are you leaning?
Either way, to be honest. I guess, what kind of a time constraint is the dream team? I don't have a huge problem with, I guess, when we went to the voters, all I was thinking was we were going to be able to build a building, and I wasn't paying a lot of attention to, I guess, the specifics there. So I guess that's, I don't know if that's a huge...
You would have to go into executive session if you want some opinions on that strategy. And I guess we should get a consensus from everybody if you want to discuss that. We can convene into that right now.
Or do we want to just...
I'd like the 15 minutes or 20 minutes explanation of that, at least, just to have that as a basis before I make a decision on this or...
And I would, too. I agree with you, Pat, on that. I'd like to have more. All right. Do you want to go into an executive session?
Yeah, there are a couple of issues. I think I'd like some clarification on that. David might be able to help.
Neil?
Well, I'm confused as to why we need to go into executive session. I know I'm the one who raised the question last, last week on this. If we're just talking finances, that should be done in the open.
Yeah. The issue, Council Reisner, is just when presented with options that come down to, you know, litigation, being in court, it would necessarily talk about strengths and weaknesses of perhaps the city's argument, and that's something generally is, you know, your legal counsel, that I think, just as any other client, you know, you have the right to hear that in a confidential manner. I can, you know, in a broader sense, if this helps, I think that, as I said before, you'd need to be able to show fairly convincingly that the intent in 2015 was to say that 3 million was not meant to be a ceiling. And so maybe one thing, you know, I don't want to, other, you know, you all voted on it, right? Some of you were on the council at that point, some of you weren't. In each of your opinion, when you voted on, maybe, maybe, I'm not sure, Matt, were you...
Oh, no, I wasn't.
I wasn't either.
Okay.
What's that? Well, I was on city council, but you lived in the city at that time, didn't you?
Mayor, you can just call for a majority and a government nod.
Yes. So, executive session, Pat? Yes. Executive session, executive session?
No.
No. Executive, executive. Yes. So we'll go ahead and adjourn our regular work session at 6:13 PM to re-adjourn into an executive session.
So I think one of the last pieces of guidance is, and I guess maybe Carol, we could do both options, is if we just do the 5 million, and if we do the 7 million, and see what those come in at. I think it would be great if we could keep some in reserve to do future projects. We can, we can look at those options.
So really, that's what I was hoping to get through. I'm excited. I know I have a police chief that is excited. And tomorrow, we'll know more about the contractors that are interested, and we'll keep moving forward. And there is quite a bit of process, even in going through borrowing the money that could be two to three months. But the advantage we have is that we have cash on hand to start the construction, and keep that going through as we work through the bond rating, the opinion, and all of that that's necessary. So, anything else that you had, David?
Well, do we need to get a consensus of validation versus dream team in open session? That would be fine, yes.
Sure.
Okay. So, validation or dream team?
Validation. Well, excuse me, dream team.
Dream team. Dream team.
Yeah.
Council Merce Rose, dream team?
Dream.
Reisner, dream?
Dream.
Dream team.
And I'll do dream team. So, there you go.
I'm on the dream team, too, by the way.
Maybe I'll re-change.
All right.
In that case, no pressure to perform.
Then what we'd be looking at, it sounds like, is that we'd have a refinement of how to put it together.
Right.
But it's going to obviously involve the 3 million in city full faith and credit, and then some combination of either cash from the Urban Renewal Agency, obviously it'll be some, and then borrowing against those funds.
Yeah. And all of this will be done in open, public session, and that information is going to be in the public. So it's very good.
So we get, I was going to say, we get another 800,000 or so next fall, right? As we're working through this?
Yeah. And we're going to start playing the lottery, right?
Gladstone's healthy. We really are. We're in a good position to be doing these projects. And, you know, we don't know what those bids are going to come in at when they come in, but we feel pretty confident that we've got negotiating and...
I was just going to say, I think that's another important thing to keep in mind about the way you're going about to build this building, is, you know, typically, we all think of, whether it's a road, or whether it's a, you know, some sort of construction project in the public realm, that you have the lowest responsible bidder, and you basically have them bid to a design of something, and they, you know, give you a figure. That's not what you're doing here. And that's why we went through that process to exempt this contract from that typical process. What you're really going to have is, is a, ultimately, you know, based on the qualifications of a firm or a team, somebody that is going to design to a budget, basically. And that gives you a lot more control. Now, you know, they're, obviously, that doesn't mean that costs stop going up. It doesn't mean the realities of the marketplace have frozen. But it does give you a lot more control over going down that road and saying at the, you know, 11th hour, well, we can't afford this now. The design is too expensive. That's all going to be managed, you know, upfront, so.
Well, thank you, everybody, for being here. I have a question. How do we make sure, moving forward, that we don't write ballot measures that are going to put us in a situation like this again? We need to be very careful. We did learn our lesson.
Don't join a group that's called Save Gladstone.
Yeah. No. Don't go down that road. Don't do it.
You wrote it.
Well... An attorney wrote it.
You're right. We've got to be cautious.
Yes, you're on the right track. So the work session has been adjourned at 6:40 PM.